Call this meeting to order. This is the organizational meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, January 12th at 7:00 PM. And our first item for organizational meeting is the acceptance of notice of the office and oath of office. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk around and I'm going to ask our three new members, Margaret Colangelo, Julie Pritchard, and Jeff Penelope Stan. So it is an honor to be selected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility, along with other members of the school board, for equitable and quality education of every student in the Northfield School District. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board formulates the educational goals and sets the course for the Northfield Public Schools. As a board, we are accountable to the community and must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we also serve as key advocates for education on behalf of the students and our community. We must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision that we intend, and we've created and fostering educational excellence for every student. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me? So I'd like you to raise your right hand. I swear that I will support...
I swear that I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States and of the state...
The Constitution of the United States and of the state...
...and that I will discharge faithfully...
And that I will discharge faithfully...
...the duties of the office of school board member...
The duties of the office of school board member...
...of Independent School District Number 659...
Of Independent School District Number 659...
...to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
The next item of our organizational meeting is the election of officers. We will go through, starting with the election of the board chair and then proceeding. I wanted to say before I get into the nominations that I have thoroughly enjoyed being your chair for the last three years. It has been an honor and I thank you for that opportunity. As many of you know, I just completed my coursework for my PhD and I'm going to be starting on my dissertation. And so I feel like it would be a good time at this point for me not to accept a nomination for chair and to allow somebody else in the board to continue in that role. I think it will also strengthen our board to have other people assuming different leadership roles. So I wanted to make sure I let everybody know. So with that, I would like to open up nominations for the election of the board chair. And I would like to make the first nomination. I would like to nominate Julie Pritchard as chair. I'll share with you that she's been my vice chair, as you know, for the last year. And as vice chair, she's been with me. I've had her engage with me when we met with the auditors before the auditing process. She was with me to help deliver the review that all board members had provided, Superintendent Richardson. She met with me when I met with Val about the financial health of the district. A year ago, she was also our substitute in teacher negotiations. And in October, when I had an unforeseen commitment come up, she was able to step into the chair's role and serve you guys during that second meeting in October. So with that, I would like to nominate Julie. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I would ask, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there...
I would second the nomination for Julie.
Okay. So are there any other nominations? All right. With that, I'll close nominations. And all those in favor of electing Julie Pritchard as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Julie is now our chair.
Thank you. Congratulations.
(applause) Well, thank you to my fellow board members for your support. Certainly an honor to be in this role and particularly thank Ellen because she has provided tremendous leadership to us. And I personally appreciate her mentorship of me in allowing me to feel at least somewhat comfortable in this seat. So, okay, so let's, we will move on to the balance of the organizational meeting. Let's see. Okay, so at this point, we need to continue with the elections of remaining officers. Next one being office of vice chair. Is there a nomination for the office of vice chair?
Julie?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Ellen to, Ellen Iverson to be the vice chair, just to continue with that supportive relationship and to help you out. And I think her experience, you know, will be great in that position without causing her to have to devote so much time to the position, so...
Okay. There's motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jeff. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no further nominations with the motion and a second for Ellen Iverson as vice chair. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ellen Iverson is the new vice chair. Congratulations. (applause) We'll move on to office of clerk. Is there a nomination for the office of clerk? Ann?
I would like to nominate Noel Strattmon.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Second by Margaret. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no further nominations, a motion and a second for Noel Strattmon as clerk. Any discussion? All those in favor of Noel Strattmon as clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noel Strattmon is elected as clerk.
Honored to serve.
Congratulations. (applause) Okay, the last office would be office of treasurer. Is there a nomination for treasurer?
I'd nominate Ann Maples.
Okay, great. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. So we have a motion and a second for Ann Maple. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no further nominations, we have a motion and a second for Ann Maple as treasurer. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ann is elected as treasurer of... (applause) Okay, the next item for individual action would be stipends for directors and officers. And board members in your packet, there's information regarding school board stipends in the Big Nine, surrounding districts, as well as Northfield's current stipend. Is there a motion to either maintain the stipends at the current level or to modify them for 2015?
Julie, I move that we maintain the current stipends for 2015.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
No, second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of maintaining the current level of school board director and officer stipend for 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is committee appointments. Board members, as you know in your packets, you have the list of school board and district committees, as well as the past year's committee assignments that board members held. And I would like to recommend to the board that we have some time for each individual board member to review the various assignments and then contact me so that we can finalize committee assignments. And if board members are comfortable with this, I would like to go to have assignments determined by our next board meeting on January 26th. So if there's no concern with that, we'll just move forward with that. Okay? So we will move on to items for consent grouping. Is there anything, anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping?
Yes, I would like to pull the designation of day and time of regular meetings. We have some additional information in the packet, so I would like to pull that on.
Okay. We will move forward with a motion then to approve all items in the consent grouping with the exception of number two, designation of day and time of meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent grouping.
Second?
I second that.
Okay, moved by Ellen, seconded by Ann. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So designation of day and times of meeting is now an item for individual action. Is there a motion to maintain current or change the day and time of meetings? Noel?
I would continue with the current time and date. I think it's been supported by the community and I think it's got some advantages which I would share with if, when we have the discussion. But I would make that as a motion.
So Noel moves to maintain current date and time of meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, second by Ann. Okay, just, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'm just wondering that, you know, the pros and cons of moving that back a half an hour. I'm not necessar, I'm not against leaving it the same, but, I mean, I would say that logic would dictate, and of course you disagree or agree with that, that if you made any change, you'd move it back a half an hour to 6:30, but if seven works fine, I think that that's a...
Anyone else?
There's a couple of reasons why I like seven o'clock, and that is, it's been a tradition for a long, long time. And there was some discussion about perhaps even moving it to five o'clock, which I think would be counterproductive to having people to particip, participate in any kind of conversation because when I worked in the cities, I didn't get home till five until six. And anyone who would be coming from the cities then would miss out on the first hour, particularly the convention and so on. And Jeff, I would even say that might even be true for some at 6:30 where they might have events, sports events and so on, and practices or rehearsals that would not allow family time to be able to participate until a seven o'clock meeting. So that's the reason I support seven o'clock.
So do we vote on that now or is it just an agenda?
Well, actually, it's an item of individual action, so we'll have discussion and then we, once board members have had the chance to discuss and ask questions, then we would move on that motion. We'd vote on the motion on the table. Ellen?
So I guess I would echo some of Noel's concerns. I was concerned about, because our public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, if you move them much earlier, we would have to consider maybe having that at a different time. And then the other concern would just be, we make this, we wouldn't make this change lightly, so thinking about future elections while we know that everybody on the board will be presumably finishing the next two years together, what does that say to the community about if you move it up because of the same concerns that Noel said, if working parents might be working in the cities or even if you have a spouse that's working and you're waiting for them to deal with babysitting and picking up middle schoolers and all of those things, I think it might be discouraging. I appreciate having this information and I don't know enough about the demographics of the other communities to know whether they have as many, you know, commuters or that, but I guess I would share some of those same concerns.
And again, I think with this particular item, we just want to simply to share with you the fact that if you look at the Big Nine, that the timeframe for those schools outside Northfield is between five and 6:30. That in any, the only one that's at this point considering a modification is Faribault. They're talking about moving from 6:30 back to five or 5:30. And obviously, I think the, the context of this is, is the idea that you're going to get your meeting completed earlier in the evening, so an opportunity for folks to finish the meeting and go with some other type of activity. We do have every once in a while with various board members who do have children in the system, always having to make that tough decision as to whether you come to the board meeting or go to your child's concert or go to your child's event. I would also say, I think the last time we changed, I think was when I came, 11 years ago. And I think 11 years ago, we were, I think we were at 7:30 and decided to move it back to seven o'clock. So, so talking about we don't take this lightly or move quickly in terms of an adjustment like this, we don't. But I would also say that many of the concerns that have been expressed are ones that I think would need to be taken into consideration, especially if you have board members or board member candidates running who then are saying, "I don't think I can run for the board because I'm not sure I can get back in time."
Margaret?
Is this, the time of the meeting, is this something that's considered at every organizational meeting at the start of the calendar year?
Mm-hmm. This is a standard part of the, of the process and not only the timing of the meeting, but also the day. So again, we're looking at, if we're maintaining, we're looking at the second and fourth Mondays of every month, except there will be months when we don't have that second meeting, as in the December period and also typically in June and July where we only have one meeting in each of those months and typically it's just the first meeting of that month.
Any other discussion? Okay? No?
Just for the history, there was a time when the meeting was at eight o'clock, when more of the board was represented by the rural community. And there were reasons to do that.
But you also talk about the fact that in those days, oftentimes the meeting ran two days.
Ran for two days.
Because it went past midnight. And kind of like, kind of like gremlins, very little good occurs after midnight.
My mother would say, "Nothing good happens after midnight," so...
Your mother was a wise woman.
Thank you. She was.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a, a motion and we have a second to maintain the current date and time of our school board meetings, our regular school board meetings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the organizational meeting, so with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn the organizational meeting. Moved by Noel.
No, no. I want to thank Ellen for the wonderful leadership that she provided us for all these years. You know, we plotted everybody else when we got elected or whatever we, we were, got our position. But I would applaud Ellen for the work that she has provided.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ann. We are adjourned. For a short time.
Switch materials.
Okay, so we're ready to go. So, okay, I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 12th, 2015, and the time is 7:19 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, if you will check your table file, you'll see there's a copy of the Schools for Equity and Education press release outlining legislative priorities for 2015. I sent that out to both the Northfield News and to KYMN this afternoon. We also have multiple personnel items in terms of appointments, increases, decreases, changes in assignments. And so I ask that those be added to the agenda where appropriate.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? I don't see anyone. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet, two sets of minutes actually for the regular meeting held on December 8th, as well as a special board meeting held on December 15th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I would move to approve all 70 minutes.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the meeting held on Monday, December 8th, 2014, and the special board meeting held on Monday, December 15th, 2014, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. On to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, I have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, our winter break chess lessons and tournament were held on December 30th at Mankato East High School hosted by South Central Service Cooperative and the Mankato Community Education Recreation Department. Students in grades K through 12 from Henderson, Medelia, Mankato, Marshall, Montgomery, Nicolet, Northfield, and St. Peter all completed and, or competed in primary, elementary, middle, and upper divisions based on grade levels. I would like to congratulate the following Northfield students who received either ribbon or medal for competing in the tournament. They include Peter Hillman, Common Thomas Green, and Saxon Eggy from Sibley Elementary School, Henry Hutton, who's an eighth grader at the middle school, and high school students Jackson Hillman, Jasper Eggy, and Gus... Oh, no. Help me with that one.
Oh, my gosh, Afghan.
Onzorg?
Onzorg.
Onzorg. Onzorg, okay. And I apologize to Gus. I'm sorry, that one I had not caught ahead of time. I do apologize. Also, I'd like to take this time to announce the, with pride, the fact that Hannah Puchko, our former Northfield Public Schools Committee Service Director, is the Minnesota Community Education Association's MCEA Lifetime Achievement Award winner.
Oh.
The MCA Lifetime Achievement Award is presented to an individual with 20-plus years of leadership in the field of community education who has had an exempt, has made exemplary contributions to enhance the goals and principles of community education locally and throughout Minnesota. The award will be presented to Hannah at the MCEA Leadership Days on February 19th and 20th in St. Cloud. So again, congratulations to Hannah. That's great.
Is there anything else anyone wishes to add? We'll move on then to items for discussion and reports. The first item for discussion is School for Equity and Education Legislative Priorities for 2015.
Okay, great. In your materials, you've got a copy of the 2015 legislative platform and in your table file, you've got the press release that we provided to the news media today on that particular piece. Again, as many of you may know, we have been involved in Schools for Equity and Education for many, many years. There are 58 members in the, in the group, which include about one-third of the total student population of the state of Minnesota. C was established back in 1979, and the focus really throughout that time since 1979 has been to promote adequate and equitable funding with a focus on the need for fairness for property taxpayers. So it's really a focus on how do we provide quality educational opportunities for kids and fairness for taxpayers. So when we look at the agenda for 2015, the pieces that we will be supporting going forward this year, there are some that are going to be very familiar because you've heard about them probably every year for as long as I've been here and probably before that when Terry or Charlie were in this seat. This year, we are focusing really on four key components. The first one is the enacting of recommendations of the Facilities Funding Work Group. That was convened by the Minnesota Department in 2013 and headed up by Tom Melcher. And Tom is kind of the guru of school finance in Minnesota and is a longtime Department of Education executive. Basically, the recommendations are focused on bringing greater equity in terms of resources and tax fairness and streamlining the system of revenue streams currently available. One of the core pieces of this is a piece called Alternative Facilities Levy. And the focus behind that is the fact that currently there are only 25 districts in the state that are eligible for alternative facilities levy. The other 320-some school districts are not eligible for that funding. And because of that, what we see for the most part is districts that have the ability to generate significantly larger amounts of funding to support repairs, emergency and otherwise, to report, to repair roofs, to work on tuck pointing, to do all the other kinds of things that, that might be in place. While, again, those 25 school districts can get to those dollars, the rest of us basically have to rely on the general fund. And because of it, it also is a situation where with both the alternative, both anything that we do in terms of capital and facilities or with building bonds, there's a significant difference in terms of the level of equalization that's available. And so as a district, we tend to, even when we're able to bond for construction or, or bond for repairs, it typically requires us to ask taxpayers for usually two to three times as much money to generate the same amount of dollars in levy. Before we go any farther, last year, you may remember the pizza video, which the effort on, on Part C was to really try to boil down a really complicated thought like equalization into something that was, I tried to avoid the pun, palpable to everyone. And as a part of that, we actually presented pizza box, small pizza boxes to every legislator with the information about this and a copy of the video. And so this year, we're really working to try to help them understand the concept of alternative facilities. And this year, we are going at it looking at Legos. So if you will fire up the screen, maestro, we should be ready to go.
Superintendent Jen and Superintendent Jimmy have built three schools.
Look out for my school.
They both have dedicated teachers and supportive parents.
I think I need a new size in the laundry rack. So do we.
Jimmy's and Jenny's school district are about the same size and not far away from each other, but there's one big difference. Jenny's district is eligible to receive school facilities funding and Jimmy's district is not.
I think I need a new roof. I just got mine. Hey, where'd you get that?
Jimmy has just discovered that not all school districts in Minnesota are treated equally. The state allows some school districts like Jimmy's to access school facilities levy funds for maintenance and upgrades. Other schools like Jimmy's have to use their general fund money and sometimes there just isn't enough.
I think I'll have to wait until next year for mine.
Unfortunately, when it comes to repairs, waiting isn't always the best answer. So school districts like Jimmy's that aren't eligible for school facilities funding must ask the voters for additional funding to make repairs and upgrades. They must run levy campaigns to get maintenance and upgrades funding. Many times, these levy campaigns delay if we vet needed projects until emergencies arise and costs skyrocket.
Now I have to pay for the roof and the flooding.
Sadly, when Jimmy's school district has repairs to make, he has to pay for them out of his general fund. That means that money that otherwise would be paid for teachers and books gets diverted to pay for repairs and in the end, students in many school districts are attending school in substandard learning environments.
Wait, 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 wait. Lockdown. We have put on a new security.
Supporting school facilities legislation is now all Minnesota school districts to keep ahead of the maintenance and repairs. Ask the governor and your state legislators to support school facilities legislation because all students deserve a safe, healthy 21st century classroom regardless of where they live in Minnesota.
And again, I think a very novel way of kind of laying it out very simply for legislators to be able to think about the concerns that we have when a few districts are able to levy when they have needs and the vast majority of districts are not able to levy without basically going to the voters and/or doing without. And so... And so the first item in terms of our platform is really trying to address that particular piece by providing access to alternative facilities levy for all districts, and also to increase the equalization amount for debt service equalization and all other facilities-related proposals. Because the one thing that we do know is if we do allow this to increase in terms of the number of districts that are eligible to request alternative facilities levy, we still may have districts that struggle to do that because they know the impact it may have on their taxpayers when they don't have the same level of valuation as other districts. The second piece in terms of the platform is really around categorical formulas, and really trying to provide greater assistance to districts that receive very little revenue through these formulas. If we think about it, we have many formulas that are set up in the state that are driven by the compensatory factor. In other words, the percentage of students that aren't free and reduced lunch. And the issue is that calculation is done at the building level. So in districts in Minneapolis and St. Paul, buildings in Minneapolis and St. Paul that have high concentrations of students, the formula that's used really weighs heavily in terms of giving them additional funding. And to the extent that they could get, where we might get $250 a pupil, they might get $1,700 a pupil. And so as part of working through this process, we would like to see modifications made to the categorical funding formulas so that we're able to address the needs that we have with kids without having to be negatively impacted because we don't have the high levels of concentration of students. And so we're looking at, trying to create a minimum per pupil for compensatory education. We're looking at a full funding of the special education mandate. We're kind of hoping now that Mr. Klein is now in a Congress that is controlled by the Republicans in both, in all of the House and Senate, that the promise that we've had for many years about fully funding special ed may come forward. But we also know that there's a big part of that that has to happen at the state level in terms of providing full funding. We're also looking for increased funding for current technical education, and districts that are below the state average in terms of the total general ed funding, an option to bring them up to the state average through an enhanced voter-approved referendum. And then finally, for English language learners along the same road. Because what we know right now is compensatory funding and English language learner funding are far underfunded. They, there just are not the dollars there to meet needs. And with compensatory, because of the fact that it is driven by the concentration of students as opposed to just the number of students who are on free and reduced lunch, there's a real discrepancy and disparity in terms of how much funding's available. So we're hoping to address that, see that piece addressed. The third piece is the traditional thing that we've asked for every year for as long as I've been in Minnesota for the last 17, 18 years. That is funding on the basic formula, because we still are not able to meet all of the unfunded mandates. We've now added additional unfunded or underfunded mandates in terms of the teacher development and evaluation process. And what we know, as we've talked before, is if we go back to 1993, if we wanted to have the same buying power today as we had in 1993 for our schools, they would have to raise the general fund formula by over $2,000 per pupil. Even going back just a few years, back to 2003, '04, you would have to see an increase of about $400 per pupil just to get us to break even. And so the concern obviously we have is that legislators look at this and they say, "But look, you're getting more dollars than you got before." But they are failing to look at the impact of inflation. And we know over the years that inflation has eaten away at the ability to meet the needs. And in our cases, in the years that we had zero increases, those have never been really made up. So we're really asking the legislature to really think about how do you get that formula on base. And then finally, continuing to make voter-approved school referendum more affordable in low property wealth districts. So the idea being that we need to think about equalization factors for debt service and really trying to address that piece. And if you think about it, we still have the middle school that's, we have a bond issue on, we still have Bridgewater, we still are finishing up paying off the addition in terms of Sibley. And at some point as we go forward, and especially as we begin talking this spring about our District Master Facilities Plan, we may need to be looking at what other kinds of resources are going to be needed. And all we're asking again is that it shouldn't depend on your zip code as to the equality of the cost to your taxpayer to meet the needs. So those are really the four areas, some very familiar messages that you've heard before. The all facilities piece is a little bit different, but you think that makes a lot of sense, and really trying to address all of the different categorical formulas, which for the most part, whether it's special ed, ELL, free and reduced price lunch, we're really not finding the, any of those formulas to provide enough dollars to really support the needs of the students that we're working with. And so as a result, every single time, we have to come back to the general fund and draw down on the general fund. And we know, you know, realistically, are we going to get all these things? No. But I, we really want the legislature to think hard about this in terms of what they should be looking for and thinking about before they look at doing additional mandates, before they look at creating additional new programming, pay for the programming that you already have. So that's kind of the message for the platform. And again, we will be moving forward with presenting this platform to various members of the legislature over the next several months. You'll see also in your materials, there is a, there's some more detailed information on school facilities and on categorical formulas, and there's actually even a chart that shows you the impact of a district like Northfield or Tri-City or Faribault in terms of how much it costs us to generate the same amount of funding in comparison to what it's like if you're in Hopkins or West Tonka. And so again, the concept here is if it's much more difficult for the taxpayer because they're having to pay more, what's our ability to really get that done if we don't have fairness and equity? So it's all about equalization in the end. Any questions that I can answer for you about the legislative priorities for 2015?
Noel?
Some years ago, I recall where there was a pretty dramatic item on the agenda which, regarding special ed reimbursement, federal government reimbursement. And if I recall, the reimbursement was two years late and at 50%. Is that still true?
No, we, at least they're better on that piece. They are, they are funding us, and I see my ace special ed director person right there in the audience. It seems to me now we are actually getting paid not two years in arrears anymore. Is it just the next year?
Right, just the next.
So I think we're just one year behind right now.
I still don't think my furnace repair man would make that.
No, would do very well on that. And we are still looking at a significant excess cost. So when we provide our programming for students, we are spending probably... You want to give me a little help, Cheryl? Can you, can you remember, is it, is it over a million or is it 680,000?
I want to say it's closer to a million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is the excess cost, which means you run, you run your programs, you pay the bills, what you get back from the state to fund those programs is close to a million dollars less than what it costs to run them. But these are fully mandated programs. We have no choice as to whether we're going to provide them. We have no choice as to the kinds of programming we need to provide for our kids, and yet neither the state nor the federal government has stepped up to address that piece.
And the difference comes out of the?
General fund.
General fund.
So in other words, what we have to do is take dollars away from the general fund that could buy programming basically for all kids, staff for all kids, then has to be cut back so that we can make sure that we cover the cost of the special ed program.
Thank you.
And again, it is, it's, in no way is it that we do not want to support every child that we have in this district. But it is, it's very frustrating that there is no mechanism for the state to make sure that we get the programs that are mandated funded.
So help me understand, why did they come up with the largest 25 schools? Was there, you know, is that a magic number?
I, I think at the time, that there was so much cloud in terms of legislators in the legislature when this was implemented. And it's actually been around, I believe, probably at least 20 or 25 years, that I think districts like Minneapolis and St. Paul basically said, "You've got to figure out a way to help us out here." And so because they, they didn't want to just stop with Minneapolis and St. Paul, the choice was to say, "Okay, we'll, the cutoff will be the 25 largest districts in the state." And it was really just a matter at that point that they had the votes to get it done. And, and a number of legislators, because again, with those 25 biggest districts, you also have a significant number of House and Senate members who then are voting for it because they are supporting their schools. Now, again, our desire is not to remove funding from, or remove the ability to do all facilities from those biggest districts, but we just think it's totally unfair that the 25 largest are the only ones that have any access whatsoever to use all facilities funding for any purpose at all.
Any other questions? Okay. Now I think our association with C has been a very big positive for our district. And when you think it, you know, they're representing 250,000 students statewide, that's not an insignificant number of districts that are facing the challenges.
The difference too with C in comparison to other associations. You have AMST, which is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, which includes just districts in the metro area. You've got MREA, which is the Rural Education Association, which represents traditionally small districts. C represents districts that are small. It also represents in Okeahinapi, the largest district in the state. But the common piece that holds us together is the fact that when you take a look at the level of equalization that's available and the level of funding that districts that are in C have access to, because they either don't have the financial wealth in the district evaluation, the district, they typically are not able to afford the same level. And I think the argument from day one with the, with this group has been your zip code should not determine the quality of education program that your child receives. And right now in Minnesota, your zip code does impact that quality.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to items for individual action. Our first item is the site improvement plans. So for board members who are on this board, this past year, we heard presentations from each of the elementary and secondary buildings, area learning center, and community services division. Chris, do you have any?
Sure. And again, basically, I would say to you, as for those of you as board members that have been involved and have been with us through this year and have been involved in listening to each of those presentations, I would say to you that each year, the quality of the presentation, the detail, the level of data analysis has gotten significantly better. Their ability to really target important goals and to really think about strategies has gotten stronger. And, you know, I think we really are in a position now as we move forward and as we work with world's best workforce, we really have the data from those seven different plans to really help us to track the 31 different data points that we use when we're looking at how we're growing. So I think it is, it is a real credit to the work of the teachers and administrators in each of our buildings who work on those particular plans, and also all of the staff that really implements those plans each year. That, I think the quality is great, and again, obviously, I would encourage you to approve those plans at this time.
Okay, before we move on to questions or discussion, we have a superintendent's recommendation to approve the seven site improvement plans for the 2014-15 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Ann.
Second.
Second by Noel. Board members, questions or comments? I would just add that as a board member, I really appreciate not only seeing some of the common challenges across the district, but really being able to see where the individual schools have their own unique sort of challenges, and it really helps to bring that together for me as a board member, so. So we have a motion and a, or a, yeah, motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have approved the seven site improvement plans for the 2014-15 school year. Next item for individual action is the increase in reward.
Okay, and I kind of begin this, and Matt, please feel free to fill in wherever it makes sense here. As you remember, back on December 15th, we had a special meeting of the Board of Education. The focus at that point was to unanimously approve a $500 reward for information leading to arrest and conviction of the perpetrator perpetrators of the December 2014 break-in and vandalism at Northfield High School. Unfortunately, we have not seen any leads pan out from that initial reward. And so as we worked over the winter break, we received a contact from a gentleman who wishes to remain anonymous, is a member of the community, who said, "I'm really upset about the fact that your building was damaged. I really would like to help see if we can get these people found." And so that generous citizen basically has committed to providing an additional $1,000 reward, so we'd bring the total reward up to $1,500 that would be offered by the school district if the board approves it. Again, this individual would like to remain anonymous, but again, we really appreciate the desire on his part to want to support our school district and hopefully to get this arrest and conviction to happen. So at this point, we'd like to recommend that you approve the additional $1,000 reward, bringing us up to a total of $1,500 for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the perpetrator of the break-in back in December 2014.
So we have a motion?
I move that we support the superintendent's recommendation to increase the reward to the $1,500 with the generous donation of the anonymous citizen.
Okay, moved by Ellen, second.
I'm happy to second that.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Last item for individual action is returning the Director of Special Services position to full.
All right, I just want to do an overview here, and then I'm going to turn it over to Matt, because Matt has provided us with a much more detailed review of the proposal. I think as board members know, there has been a decision made on the part of the Faribault Community Schools that they would like to end the the Faribault Community Schools, that they would like to end the two-year shared relationship that we've had, as far as the Director of Special Services, and to move back to having their own full-time special education director. And as we looked at the situation going forward, we really felt that it was probably also time for us to continue, or to consider returning to a full-time Director of Student Services or Special Services for the Northfield Public Schools. And so, what I would like to do, is have Matt kind of share with you the information that he provided to you, about this request, and to give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. Matt?
Sure. So, as Dr. Richardson said, in December, we learned from the Faribault Schools, that they were not interested in continuing with the agreement past the end of this fiscal year. So, we had analyzed what were our potential options, looking at special education leadership, that you all know is very important. What we're seeing, as we move forward, is what, what we're almost calling a trend, we're not maybe technically there yet, but we continue to see greater and more severe needs, of all kinds, academic, behavioral, the entire enchilada really, of students who have really severe needs. And a glaring need for day-to-day specialized leadership, in the area of special education. So, as we looked at the different pieces that were possibilities, we immediately felt our entire cabinet, that it was appropriate to bring back to full-time, a special education director. The second piece is, since we've gone to a shared model, our building principals have picked up some additional responsibilities on a day-to-day level. Our building principals do a great job, they will still attend IEP meetings, but when it gets to some of the more difficult ones, we would now have our special education director back in the district full-time, to assist with some of those meetings, with specialized knowledge of the law, specialized knowledge of best instructional practices, and really, what's the best for the student, and their individual disability. We really believe that that's going to provide us a greater opportunity to do that, and not frankly, have to schedule around two full school districts. I think that the final piece with it, is really thinking about making sure that we're as efficient as we can be. We knew that when we went into the cooperative arrangement, that some of our processes would take a little longer than they had before. And one of the things that we're looking forward to, as we bring this back, is to have, again, that day-to-day leadership on the part of a Director of Special Services, to where the staffing is very specific, and we're able to respond to needs, and more quickly. There isn't, no one did anything wrong, it's just the fact that things took longer, and we knew that, when we went into this. You know that we look for every opportunity to be good stewards of our dollars in this district. And when people come to us with creative arrangements, to see if we can provide a high-quality service for lower money, we do that, because we think it's reasonable to do so. In this case, I want to compliment Cheryl, who did a great job in the shared, but imagine that, leading two districts of about 4,000 kids apiece, in a very high-needs and very specialized area, it was a Herculean effort. So, well done Cheryl, and...
I was thinking Wonder Woman, but it's...
Well, you got Hercules tonight, Dr. Richardson.
Okay, all right, very good.
So, after we determined that, we would like to recommend to you, that we go back to a full-time special education or Director of Special Services, we looked at, what's the kind of pool that's available, you know, in terms of those leaderships? It's very specialized, and frankly, there just aren't a lot of really qualified people going to that area, it's very high needs. And we knew we had an opportunity, to potentially bring Director Hall home, in terms of, as you know, she worked in this district for many years, as a teacher, as a coordinator with Dr. Lewis for many years. Her reputation here is impeccable, and we are fortunate that she was very interested and has applied for the position. So, what we're asking for here, is we're asking you, during this portion of the meeting, to approve returning the Director of Special Services position to the district, in a similar location in our hierarchy, that it was when we had a shared position. And in addition then, should you approve that, in the consent grouping, I'm proud to tell you that we have a recommendation for employment for Cheryl Hall. Should you approve this, and you approve the consent grouping, we would be happy to bring her back, full-time here, beginning July 1st, 2015. So, trying to give you a reasonably deep, yet brief overview of that process, is what my goal was. I would be happy to answer any questions, if I've not been clear enough for you.
We'll begin first with, there's a motion to approve returning the Director of Special Services position to a full-time, effective July 1st, 2015. Moved by Noel, second. Seconded by Ann. Any discussion or questions? Ann?
I just have a comment. I want, I want to thank you, Matt, and Chris, and Cheryl, for all the work on that in-between time, and, you know, it was an interesting experiment, and I think we all are very thanks for that. Good for us to...
I want to be clear, we're going to go after those opportunities, again, we take stewardship seriously. And when we have, we have done a number of things over the past few years, to provide quality service, at a more reasonable price to our taxpayers. We will not shy away from looking at other opportunities, because you just aren't ever sure, which is going to be the right opportunity, at the right time, that can save us some dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? I would echo what Ann said too. It's amazing work that special ed across the district do, and led by Cheryl Hall, it's an amazing group, so we appreciate everything that you do. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we will move on to the consent grouping. Remind board members, there's a number of personnel items that were in the table file, that are to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping?
I'd like to pull the item for the consent, the gift agreement for the Emaus Baptist Church.
Pardon?
I'd like to pull that out, for a little discussion. The one for the Emaus Baptist Church.
Okay.
Thousand-dollar gift.
Did you want to move that separately, or?
Well, not necessarily. I just want to acknowledge the, and express, I think, the board's appreciation. The Emaus Baptist Church is not a community church, and yet, it's really expressing a responsibility to the people of the community. And I really admire that, and they should be acknowledged for that, more so than just a piece of passing of our legislation here.
Okay.
So, thank you folks, and Emaus Baptist Church.
Thank you.
Well, the other piece too, is part of the, part of the thank you, was that this summer, when we had the parking lot completely torn up at Greenville Park, and we could not run our kindergarten readiness program, our Bridges Decay program, they stepped up and said, "We'd be happy to have you bring that program to Emaus, and to allow us to do all the programming that we needed to do for that three-week block of, prior to the start of school." So, they have demonstrated some really good citizens of the community, in terms of wanting to support the school district, and support our kids. So, it's a, it was a very good thing.
Matt, sure, that was the only reason I wanted to pull that out.
So, we do still need a motion to approve the consent grouping. Moved by Jeff, second. Second. Seconded by Ellen. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for informational, information, we have the, we have three items, I believe. First being the T.I.S. Exceptional Teachers Award Program, which recently recognized Robert Garcia, fourth-grade teacher at Greenville, for his innovative practices in the classroom, and Jackie McKay, English teacher at the high school, for being a leader in the district's transformational technology initiative. Jackie has led numerous workshops for her colleagues in classroom management and the digital environment, and we extend our congratulations, and thank them for their outstanding work. We're always fortunate, we have a number of teachers who receive the T.I.S. Exceptional Teachers Award every year. Second is the Educational Assistant Recognition Week, which this year will be January 25th through January 31st, 2015. That week recognizes the important role of educational assistance, in helping our students to be successful, and we thank them for their work. Also, in our packets, were the enrollment report for January 2015. Does Richard have any comments?
No, no real major piece. As usual, we're sitting about 3,900, and some kids, and that's, that, those numbers are staying very, very solid. As usual, we have a little bit of drift toward the end of, or toward the midpoint of the year, we may see some pick up again, at various levels, but again, remarkably stable, even despite our fearless prognosticator of 200 student drops in enrollment. But that's going to take several years for us to get there, so. So, no, really, nothing remarkable about the enrollment report.
Okay. Future meetings, Monday, January 26th, 2015, and Monday, February 9th, 2015. With that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Moved by Noel, second.
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.